Good evening, everybody. This is Mike Ostafi, Chair of the OSIO School Board. Thank you all for joining us this evening. Pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.021, in the current state of emergency due to the COVID-19 pandemic, this regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board will be conducted via electronic means, which is our Internet video conference this evening. Consistent with the current state and federal pandemic guidance, Superintendent Corey McIntyre and myself, Board Chair Mike Ostafi, have determined that due to health pandemic and emergency declaration, a meeting format allowing for open in-person attendance is not practical or prudent. As a result, it is unfeasible for at least one board member, superintendent, or general counsel to be physically present at the regular meeting location. It is also not feasible for members of the public to attend at the regular meeting location. Members of the public may monitor the meeting electronically by streaming online from the district website. An archived recording of this meeting will also be available on the district website. The regular meeting of the Independent School District 279 School Board is called to order at 6:10 p.m. on Tuesday, April 28th, 2020. Let's do a roll call. Board members, joining us by video conference, please respond when I call your name. Director Jessica Craig.
Present.
Director Kelsey Dawson-Walton.
Here.
Director Tanya Simons.
Here.
Director Jackie Muscata-Jones.
Present.
Director Heather Douglas.
Present.
And Superintendent Corey McIntyre.
Here, thank you.
And obviously, I, Mike Ostafi, am present. Also joining us in this video conference this evening are cabinet members and our board secretary, and they will be presenting and introduced as necessary. Director Muscata-Jones, will you please recite the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Director. With that, board members, item number two, do you have any additions to this evening's agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion to accept and a second. A roll call vote will be taken by the board secretary. Well, is there any discussion first? Hearing none, a roll call will be taken by the board secretary. Board members, please respond with aye or nay when Sherri calls your name.
Aye.
Thank you, Sherri. The motion passes six to nothing. The agenda has been accepted as presented. Audience opportunity to present the board is typically the next item on the agenda, but because this sort of school board meeting is not being conducted in person, there ought to be an opportunity for persons to directly address the board. Persons seeking to communicate with the board on relevant topics should instead submit comments to the board by email through osioschoolboard@district279.org. Hundreds of you have done that over the last several days. That is, there's also we listen@district279.org, so please feel free at any time, day or night, to send us your comments and your thoughts. Next up, and we are working on a method for May, to have a more accommodating method to do that for the next board meeting. Next up is the superintendent's report, and Mr. McIntyre.
Thank you, Sheriff Ostafi. I was going to follow up with the same comment for our viewing public. We anticipate to have a process in place for public comment at our next regular board meeting, so thank you. So tonight, my superintendent's report, I wanted to share some highlights of our work from two perspectives. First, our present, immediate work to implement distance learning, and second, our work to plan for the future. We're now in our fifth week of distance learning, and it continues to be our daily focus. Every day, our teachers and support staff are going above and beyond to engage students in learning activities and maintain positive relationships. Our food and nutrition staff are serving between 15,000 and 20,000 meals per week, and our three emergency care locations are serving a total of nearly or just shy of 100 children for eligible essential workers. We're distributing additional mobile devices so that all students, K-12, will have an individual district-designed device for learning. We're working with community partners to provide Internet access to families of enrolled students who don't have Internet at home. Our student service and other staff are connecting with students and families to meet a variety of academic, language, and mental health needs. Our custodial and buildings and ground staff are making sure that all of our buildings are clean and are working properly as they start planning for summer deep cleaning and renovation work. That's just a small sampling of work going on every day to support students and families during this distance learning period. I also want to point out, we've asked for feedback through a variety of surveys from students, families, and staff about their experiences with distance learning so far. We'll be using that feedback to continue to refine our practices. I've been communicating regularly with families throughout the school closure period, and will highlight the most recent message that gets particularly close to home for our seniors. Last week, I wrote to all high school families to let them know that unfortunately, prom and spring sports are canceled for the remainder of this school year. And we know how disappointing this news is to our high school students, but especially our graduating seniors. The way this school year is ending is not what any of us would have wanted for them in their final year. On a brighter note, though, I can share that commencement ceremonies have been rescheduled for Saturday, July 25th, at Miriuchi Arena. We are hopeful that we'll be able to hold these ceremonies and will, of course, comply with any governor's order about pandemic-related requirements. All of our communications are archived in our distance learning section of our district website, and that can be found there as well. Finally, I just want to share with our community that while we're fully immersed in the daily implementation of distance learning, we're also considering the future and looking ahead. My leadership team and all of our principals and other leaders are already engaging in conversations about what's next, what does school look like in the fall of 2020 and beyond, and how will this year's experience impact education in the future? Right now, there are more questions than answers, but I want to assure you that we're already having those conversations and will continue to consider how our learning from this spring can be used to inform new thinking around the delivery of education to all of our learners in the future. Sheriff Ostafi, that concludes my superintendent's report this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. Up next are the school board reports, and we'll start with Director Craig. Do you have a committee report or update?
I do not tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Director. Director Dawson-Walton, do you have a report or update?
Okay. Confine my culture there. Yeah, on Friday, May 1st, on this Sunday, we have a virtual meeting with the Minnesota School Districts, and we're going to hear from Reimagine Minnesota. And so kind of reconvene. We didn't meet last month due to the COVID-19, just kind of everybody kind of getting reacquainted with how we're going to do business. And so that is not, so that will be happening on Friday, so I think there will be a lot of good information. I did want to just, you know, Mike, Sheriff Ostafi, you alluded to it. We received many, many emails, over 350 regarding one of our items, our action items tonight. And I wanted to, I firmly and strongly believe in public voice and comment, especially when we're, you know, a governing board of the school district. I did want to just read real quick one email that I just felt was...
This is not an agenda item, and I'm sorry, and I want to stick through that time later.
Oh, I'm sorry, this is my time to give an update. So I just wanted to say, I want to just thank everybody, and we're going to talk about it later. But from one person who just talked about just being a kid stop instructor at Oakview Elementary, I'm just having really the privilege to work with students and families and, you know, been assigned to one of our emergency care sites from the beginning. So just coming together and just the amount of work that went into the cleaning and sanitizing of each space, and just personally just working through with different program managers and create some policies to ensure our staff is safe. And so I just wanted to, that's just an example of, you know, I know that if we had had public comment, I know we would have people speaking on that behalf. So I wanted to yield my time to allow some of that voice to come in, and I know we'll be talking about it later, so thank you.
Thank you, Director Dawson-Walton. Director Simons, do you have a report or update?
No, as this time is for providing reports, I did not have any meetings and do not have a report to provide.
Thank you. Director Muscata-Jones, do you have a report or an update?
On the District 279 Foundation, we haven't been able to meet, but just an update that awards of classroom grants have been awarded again. And then the youth found, Ryan, help me. My brain is fuzzy after reading 350 emails. The event that we usually have on May 4th, what's it called?
Yeah, Director Muscata-Jones is talking about the investment in youth. Award banquet that we have every, for Sunday of every May through the District 279 Foundation. That event is canceled as school is in distance learning right now, but we are continuing to honor all award recipients with their medallion and a program that's going to be sent directly to them in the mail. And you can also look for award announcements on Facebook, the foundation website, et cetera. So we're doing everything we can to still honor people who would have been honored at that evening's event, even though it's canceled.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Director Muscata, do you have any additional updates?
I do not have any other reports from today, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Director Douglas, do you have a report or update?
I do. As you all know, I typically like to share our updates from our District 287 Board. However, we have not held an in-person board meeting due to the COVID pandemic. I did just want to highlight that we will be having our board meeting Thursday, so in two days. We'll be holding that meeting virtually, similarly to this one. But as I've spoken of before, most of the students served by 287 are typically higher need students. They usually require a really specific set of skills from their staff, support staff, and their teachers and educators. And these students are really, really suffering, and so we're having to really come together and reimagine what education looks like for these students. And it's a lot of work, and I am just so proud of all of the staff members involved in this. Additionally, we have unfortunately had some really unexpected and unforeseen health issues amongst some of the longest-standing and consistent cabinet members on our cabinet at 287. And so we're having to really reshift how we do business from an administrative side and a student perspective. And so a lot of work is being put into that. And just like we've received hundreds of emails about our agenda item tonight, we're receiving hundreds of emails from families impacted by the COVID closure at 287. So I just wanted to share that with all of you so you know that we are working diligently to make sure that those students are best served in the best way that we can to support their unique needs.
Okay.
And that is the end of today.
Thank you, Director Douglas. At this time, I have a report or update. That brings us to agenda item number seven, which is the presentation of the Oversight Task Force, and that's Superintendent McIntyre and Ron Meyer, Executive Director of Finance and Operations. Gentlemen, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, Sheriff Ostafi. Appreciate it. So on this topic tonight, first, I just want to provide some context to our presentation. This is an information-only item for reviewing the recommendations that have come to me as superintendent from the task force, which includes Director Dawson-Walton and Director Simons as members. The role of the Oversight Task Force was really around our building a better future work regarding facilities. And the task force's role was not to come up with new ideas or how to use our facilities, but their role was to take the findings and recommendations from each of the study groups, prioritize them, identify funding sources, put together a timeline to accomplish them based on the information available at the time. So this is what you're going to see in the recommendations tonight, and I just want to take a moment to thank the task force. They worked very hard in a very short period of time to accomplish their work. This was right in front of the closure for COVID-19, which I'll speak about in a little bit. So moving forward, and I'll comment on this later, I likely will be coming back to the board with my recommendations as superintendent at the May Board meeting, but tonight, we wanted to share with you the work of that task force and their recommendations. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ron Meyer.
All right. Good evening, Sheriff Ostafi, Superintendent McIntyre, and school board members. Over the past year, the school district has been engaged in a comprehensive review and needs analysis of our district facilities. As you may recall, this past January, the board heard the findings of those study groups that Superintendent McIntyre just referenced regarding our facility needs now and also into the future. So this evening's presentation is to inform and update the board on the continued work of our facility planning since January, and specifically, the work of the Facilities Oversight Task Force. The outcome of tonight's presentation is for board members to understand the recommendations that were developed by the Facilities Oversight Task Force and recently submitted to Superintendent McIntyre for his consideration. So we will start with a little background of the facilities' planning process, and then the purpose of the Oversight Task Force work. To get started, I want to ground us all on our Building a Better Future process. So this diagram, as you may recall on the slide, gives a visual reminder of the process that we have been engaged in for the past year. We started last spring with study groups working in coordination with our district advisory team to research and determine facility needs for enrollment capacity for elementary and secondary next-generation learning spaces, for safety and security, and for student athletics. This work was designed to complement the work of our Enrollment and Capacity Management Advisory Committee, or ECMAC, that had been working for the previous three years. At the January 14th, 2020, School Board Work Session, board members heard the results and findings of these study groups. The next step on our process was to assemble an Oversight Task Force to review the work of the study groups and to develop recommendations to bring back to the superintendent. The purpose, then, of the Oversight Task Force was to gather facility recommendations from those study groups to prioritize the facility projects, to consider funding strategies, to develop timelines, to create a plan to collect community feedback, and then to ultimately make comprehensive recommendations regarding facility planning back to the superintendent. Here is a list of the task force members. As you can see, it was comprised of building leaders at the elementary, middle, and senior high levels. It included district administrators and representatives from the school board. Finally, walled architects and engineers participated in each meeting in a consulting wall. The first work the Facilities Oversight Task Force engaged in was to determine how decisions and recommendations would be made. After significant discussion, decision-making criteria was established. Throughout each meeting, as various recommendations were created and considered, application of this criteria occurred. So now, I will give a brief summary of each recommended element. As described in the purpose of the Oversight Task Force, the group was charged with prioritizing the various recommendations that came from the study groups. The task force engaged in several exercises to determine prioritization dependent on need, timelines, and funding source options. The group prioritized into four different levels. The priority level one items are those that the committee recommended moving forward immediately. These are items that already have a potential funding source and also have a higher level of urgency. Priority level two items are high in priority, but additional funding would need to be secured, likely through voter approval, to move forward. These priority level two items are listed on the screen. Depending on the total amount of funds that could be secured from voter approval, priority levels three through four would follow in order of importance. There are several funding options that school districts in Minnesota can utilize when considering facility needs and improvements. The task force reviewed information on 10 different financial tools, as summarized by our district's financial advisor. After considering all of those available tools and after input from the school district finance team, the task force identified five different funding sources that could be considered to fund the facility needs. Several of the study group recommendations could be realized through multiple funding options. So a final funding strategy would be developed in consultation with the district's financial advisor based on the final need determination for all of the district's facilities. Included in the recommendation that came out of the Elementary Next Generation Learning Space Study Team and the Secondary Next Generation Learning Space Study Team was to take the 2020, 2021 school year to evaluate and to determine gaps at each of the district's facility as it relates to the other components of the group's proposal. In addition to that recommendation, the Facilities Oversight Task Force discussed and reviewed other areas of facility needs that should be addressed and considered before a final comprehensive facility plan is determined. Therefore, the task force recommends additional study in the following areas. As I mentioned, the elementary and secondary learning space audit proposed at both elementary and secondary sites to understand the gap in terms of the other recommendations. A student service facility needs, including center-based special education, early childhood special education, transition programs, as well as other student services needs. A community education facility needs analysis to determine the current and also the future needs for our community education programming. A furniture standards for both elementary and secondary analysis. As the board members may recall from our January 14th work session, the initial study teams recommended flexible furniture at both the elementary and the secondary level. So further study is recommended to understand standards for each level, including what types of furniture would be acquired, as well as the requirement for use of that furniture. Further study as it relates to magnet school programming to determine our district-wide facility needs for both our current magnet school programming, as well as any potential future magnets program opportunities, as well as career and tech ed programming for our current needs, as well as our future needs in that area. Based on feedback that we received in January at the School Board Work Session, there is an interest in looking at middle school athletics. So it is recommended that further study be looked at for facility needs to reinstate middle school athletics. And then finally, additional study to address under-capacity facilities in the district, to determine options to address those conditions at both the elementary and the secondary facilities in the district, and also to look at how proposed construction of a new elementary school in the Northwest Maple Grove area impacts the overall district enrollment and capacity. There were several factors the task force considered as they put together timeline recommendations, including additional study requirements, voter-approved funding needs, expiring referendums, and current capacity concerns. The timelines that the task force recommended include, in addition to Rice Lake Elementary using lease levy funding, which has already been included in our current levy. If approved, the planning for this addition would begin in late spring of 2020, and the additional space would be available to Rice Lake students and staff likely by December of 2021. While many of the projects that would be eligible for long-term facility maintenance funding also coincide with bond referendum funding, and so no timetable has been established, there are a few urgent projects that could be done without bond funding, which could be accomplished between the summer of 2020 and 2022. These include the senior high turf field, scoreboards across our site, Maple Grove track resurfacing, and deferred maintenance on our stadium facilities. The last time that the task force, the last timeline that the task force recommended was to do a comprehensive community request for funding for facilities in November of 2022 through a bond referendum, at the same time as a renewal to the current operating levy, as well as renewal of the capital project levy. This timeline allows for adequate time to incorporate the results of the additional study areas that the task force recommended that we just talked about, as well as time to create and implement a comprehensive community engagement plan. A bond referendum would provide funding to build a new elementary school, additions at the secondary level, and other facility needs that do not have another identified funding source. The capital projects levy could include elements of safety and security that the study group recommendations included, included in addition to the renewal of the current technology funding. An operating levy request could include funds to operate the new elementary school, as well as renewal of the current operating funding. The task force spent significant time discussing the importance of community engagement in the decision-making process for addressing facility needs. Included in the decision-making criteria that we talked about early in the presentation is how any recommendation would impact the ability of the school district to adequately engage and solicit feedback on any option considered. With the current proposal, the task force recommends that the district develop a communication plan to update stakeholders on the current status of the Building a Better Future process across the district. That the district develop a communication plan to inform Rice Lake Elementary stakeholders of facility additions to address the overcapacity concerns at Rice Lake Elementary, and to develop a comprehensive community engagement plan for community feedback and input when options are developed for additional facility needs, including any potential referendum question. This engagement plan should include communication and information for potential voter-approved funding. While there are elements of the Facilities Oversight Task Force recommendation that are complete, such as the Rice Lake addition recommendation, as well as some of the LTFM projects that we talked about, much of the information that's necessary for a comprehensive facility plan is contingent on the study areas that have been identified and recommended. Therefore, the recommendation includes that starting in July of 2021, the Facilities Oversight Task Force would convene to consider the results of the areas of study and to integrate them into the larger plan. By December of 2021, the task force would be requested to recommend a comprehensive facility plan that includes prioritization of projects, as well as any funding mechanisms. And with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent McIntyre to talk about the next step.
All right, thank you, Ron. I appreciate you kind of reviewing the work that was done. And I just want to stress again, thank you to the work and recommendations done by the task force and all the study groups that was done earlier this year, and also stress that it was done pre-COVID-19. And the impact of COVID-19 has just so many unknowns and is affecting so many aspects of our work as a district that that might require some adjustment or additional recommendations or adjustments, adjustment to some timelines based on our current and future reality. So we have some time in front of us as I take these into consideration and what our new reality is before bringing any adjustments of those recommendations to the board. Again, that is intended to come to you next month for your review and potential board action. I also want to ensure that we are trying to be in alignment with our strategic planning process and other district's strategic party work, which we've had to put on hold a bit here recently too. So there's a lot of things we need to be thinking about and working on, making sure we have alignment along the way. So with that, Chair Ostaffy, Ron, and I could entertain any questions the board has on our presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. Let's go around people with questions, and let's start with Director Douglas.
I do not have any questions at this time. I understand that we're going to have to probably reevaluate a lot of things because of the current situation. And I expect that we'll be having a lot more questions as we look at specific issues. But at this time, I have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Douglas. Director Muscata Jones, do you have any questions or comments?
I'm in the same boat as Director Douglas right now.
Okay, thank you. Director Dawson Walton, you are a member of the Oversight Task Force. Do you have anything to add or question? Director Dawson Walton?
Yes.
You do not? Okay, thank you. Director Simons, any questions?
No questions. I just want to thank Ron and the team for the work that went into this over several sessions. I really appreciated having some really good clarity on decision criteria to help us navigate through this to arrive at the recommendations. And I know it can feel very frustrating to many in the public who it may appear that we're saying, "Hold on, let's dig into some things." A little deeper in a year from now, we'll reconvene again. I can understand that we've just- I think it's a right decision with many strategic items intertwined with this long-term plan. But I also appreciate that Ron's clarified under the timeline slide the items that we think need a sense of urgency around them and won't wait until that reconvene time. With that specifically, the Rice Lake addition, I think that's something that needs to come forward. We can expect to come forward to our board quickly to advance that project forward if that's what the board votes on. But so I appreciate that clarity between what we're going to reconvene on and what we need to have urgent action on right now that won't wait.
Thank you, Director Simons, and thank you for also being on the task force. Director Craig, do you have any questions?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, and I thank you for bringing up the issue of Rice Lake. It was saying that we're going to do this in the spring. We're in the spring. So I'm wondering how our delays because of COVID and all of that will impact that construction timeline? Is it something that still would be recommended for this year? And could we get it done without impacting Rice Lake in the fall?
Yeah, that's a great question. Originally, when we put together the timeline, it started the planning process in the early summer, so June-ish. We had some conversations about potentially bringing that forward to the board a little earlier to give a little bit more planning time to engage stakeholders. And unfortunately, then COVID came forward. And so certainly if Superintendent McIntyre brings that forward as it's his recommendation and the board decides to move forward with that, we'll work closely with WOLD, architects and engineers to develop that timeline. We do think, you know, the important part is making sure that we get the right voices in the room and the right stakeholders to speak into what is that going to look like and make sure that aligns with a lot of the work that our next generation learning space team did and that we're integrating some of those elements into the design of that. And so we'll have to get creative with Margot and her team there at Rice Lake on how to make sure that we're engaging those families, as well as the staff there at Rice Lake with that. So it could potentially delay us a little bit from that December opening. The nice thing about doing an addition is that we can move in as soon as we have it ready to go. We don't have to wait for the start of a school year because it's not a new school that would require any boundary changes. So if it does go a little bit further, you know, hopefully by January or maybe February, it might move into if we get a little bit delayed in the planning process.
Thank you, Ron. And did that also take into consideration the update to the walls and the rest of the rooms in that building, or is that just the addition? Because I know that there's discussions.
Yep, it's a great question. The lease levy component would be, would allow us to add additional square footage for educational purposes. We do have some long-term facility maintenance work to do in specifically some of those walls. And so we'll work closely with Dale and his team and our LTFM team in understanding how do we do that work, not disrupt the teaching and learning at Rice Lake during that time that it's going on and making sure that we're dealing with some of those walls. So that is on our radar to figure out how do we, just like we've done with projects in the past and kind of waiting on some of our LTFM to make sure that it's aligning with some of the other work that we're doing. We'll continue to look at that with Rice Lake and integrate that as much as possible.
Okay, thank you, Ron. With that, we can move on. Thank you, Ron, and thank you, Cory, for the presentation. Appreciate the time and the effort of everyone, cabinet, staff, board members, and WOLD who've put into this. Looking forward to the recommendation, final recommendation in May. The next agenda item is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items presented for approval can be viewed on the district website. Board members, are there any items from the agenda that you would like to remove for separate consideration?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I would like to remove item E as an Edward.
E. Okay. I'm to move around on multiple screens here to look at it. Could you tell me what the, that agenda item is?
That is extension of the contract for services with Sandra Day.
Okay, all right. So we will remove that, or the, so there's a motion to remove that from the agenda. And is there a motion to approve item E, which was removed from the agenda and placed in the regular agenda? Is there a motion? I think you've made the motion. Yes, so is there a second? I will second that motion. Is there any discussion to approve the consent agenda? Or to approve the item which was removed from the consent agenda? Is there, there's been a motion, there's been a second, any discussion?
Can I be clear? I just want to be clear. Sorry, Tanya, did you want me to go?
Go ahead.
I just want to be clear. Are we voting on whether or not to remove the item or voting on the item right now?
A question to remove.
That's what I would interpret right now.
Right, yes, discussion.
I just wanted to be clear that we're voting on removing this from the consent agenda and moving it into an action item.
Yes, is there any, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Typically, in the past, we have just removed the item and then gone forward with the consent agenda. I just want some clarity on process here.
Okay, I'm trying to read all of this as we're going through and correct. Each item removed from consent agenda have a separate motion. So as of now, you are correct. We don't need a motion to remove it. You've asked for it. We can remove it, and then we will act on that separately. And we will do that after the consent agenda. Is that, is that clear? Is that, does that make sense?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm out of Roberts Rules.
Yeah, and Mike, that's consistent. If one board member moves to remove an item, then it's taken up as a separate action item.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
And so a roll call vote will be taken. So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any question? All in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended by removing item E, please say aye. Or I'm sorry. Sherry, please take the roll call vote.
Aye.
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 That consent agenda as amended passes six to zero. Thank you. We will now consider the removed item, item E. And Jessica, if, or Director Craig, if you could relate what that item is again. And we will go through a discussion of that.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an item, the original contract we approved a year ago. This is for the extension of the contract for services with Sandra Day. And a year ago, when we had originally passed this, I had said-
So, so.
Oh, go ahead.
No, Director, I just wanted to get a description of that, and now we'll move to a vote, and then we can have the discussion. So let's, let's do that. So we have the description of what that is for everyone that doesn't have multiple screens in front of them. Is there a motion to approve? Or do we have a motion on this item to approve or reject? I guess the motion is to approve. Do we have a motion to approve this, this item? Sherry, do-
I moved to approve this item as identified on the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
We have, thank you, Director Muscata Jones. Is there any discussion on this item? And Director Craig, if you want to start, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This contract we approved over a year ago to complete the implementation of our new E Finance Plus and some other additional programs. And at that time, when we approved, I mentioned that I would not likely support any extensions in the future. And so as this is an extension of that contract, I will not be in support of it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, any other issues, directors? And that, I do believe that was an extension a year ago. We continue to work on things, and I'm wondering if I could ask Anthony Paternos why this is continuing? Why do we continue to need these services?
I think Laurel Anderson and I can both tag-team this. So this contract isn't the same as Lisa Stockmo's position, who is the project manager for all of E Finance Plus. That contract is not up for an extension or continuation. Sandra Day's contract for service is in particular to our electronic employee evaluation system, which is in the process of being implemented. And then I'll hand it over to Laurel if she's got any additions to add in there. But just want to clarify the purpose of this contract imposition as opposed to Lisa Stockmo's, who was for the project management of E Finance Plus.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. As a part of our budget allocation for this year, human resources had one FTE to use for implementation purposes, both of E Finance Plus and other related applications. We chose to divide that fund into two pieces. So we had a specialist doing part-time casual work, less than 16 hours a week. And then we had Sandra Day working on our perform evaluation system. When we went to distance learning, we no longer use the service of that part-time casual employee. And instead, we're going to shift the staff, the funding source for that staff, over to Sandra Day. And part of the need has to do with the number of workflows that we have because of the complicated employee groups that we have in the evaluation system. We've had to do over 100 workflows. So her primary task has been updating job descriptions to get us ready for those workflows and then to implement the workflows. And now we're into hopefully an efficiency and effectiveness model. When we've worked on our pilot programs, we've learned a few things. And we'd like her to continue to work technically to get those workflows as efficient and as effective as possible for our implementation in the fall.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Thank you, Laurel. Directors, are there any other questions? With that, we'll move to the vote. All in favor of approving the contract, please, Sherry, go through. Sorry. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Nay.
The motion passes five to one. Thank you. That is the end of consent agenda. Next, it's up is action items. The first action item this evening is the recommendation 9A, the recommendation to approve the fiscal year 2020 budget revision. Superintendent McIntyre, Ron Meyer, and Laurel Anderson will share information. There was an option A and an option B that the administration put forward. And with that, please start the presentation.
All right, thank you, Chair Ostaffy, and thank you, board members. I'd like to provide some comments as we get started on this agenda item tonight. If you recall, we started this conversation together at the work session on April 14th, really based on what we knew at the time. And tonight, as I introduce this presentation, I hope my comments in our presentation reflects our focus on those things we believe to be important and what we're recommending and why, and what I believe my responsibility is as your superintendent. Even though our budget had been set for the year, the impact of COVID-19 has continued to evolve and change often over the last six weeks. To that end, our goal was to be transparent and have the board provide direction regarding the budget transfers during this very unique time. Information and guidance has been really in flux over the last past six weeks. What we had learned, starting with the initial closure of school from March 15th to March 30th, and then what we learned during the first distance learning period established from March 30th to April 30th, and now that distance learning's been extended to the end of the year. All that's continued to change and evolve rapidly. We've talked a lot about that, not only for our instructional program, but also for operations and budget finance. So during this time, we've continually been reviewing and evaluating information that has been available and trying to interpret the details of the executive orders, along with additional guidance from the Department of Education, including regular conference calls with the commissioner. Initially, school districts had the understanding that we were to pay all employees during the closure and distance learning period. And districts really didn't get clarification on that for a few weeks. So what budget options were available were really unclear at the time, and districts had different interpretations. Even our legislature is interpreting this differently right now in different bills. So we move forward, trying our best to keep all of our employees whole until we had more direction. A little over two weeks ago, Minnesota districts got, you know, they learned from the state that we can and do have the option to make reductions when there is no revenue streams coming in to support the programs or employees in those programs. And really specifically, this has been the focus for fee-based programs in relation to hourly employees. So in response to the governor's executive orders, that MDE guidance that has been recently provided, our goal was to develop options for the board's consideration based on those state parameters given to us, so you could see what that would look like. We're providing an option in each scenario, an option with a strategy to continue keeping all staff employed while kept whole through the rest of the school year, the next month and a half. Another option that would show you what it would look like if we worked within those state parameters and guidance for allowable reductions due to a lack of revenue in those fee-based programs. While we recognize there could be many ways and options to consider when looking at any potential reductions, we have modeled one option that would realize some budget savings, but would also continue operations in the emergency childcare and in our free meal distribution programs. Along with the financial implications, any staff reduction would include human resource and other organizational impacts, and we'll briefly discuss those tonight as well. human resource and other organizational impacts, and we'll briefly discuss those tonight as well. So, tonight, we're asking the school board to take action on the budget revision, specifically the transfer funds to cover the costs we have realized during the closure and the distance learning period. Our recommendation is centered on trying to keep staff employed as long as possible. However, I want to stress that realistically, there may be a need for reductions down the road if revenue that supports and pays for those programs and the employees in it just simply continues not to come in. Nevertheless, in working in partnership with our employee groups, our team has worked hard to research options available. And as I stated earlier, the decision-making that we used on options that we bring before you tonight, along with our recommendation, really took into consideration a number of factors. I've mentioned the Governor's Executive Orders and also MDE requirements and guidance we've been given, our district financial situation, our district core values and collective bargaining agreements, taking into consideration our commitment to our district strategic priorities, and also our legislative priorities the board has set. However, the key principle that we continue to think about is valuing our staff and being responsible towards our resources. So, as the board continues to work with the administration and partnership in our governance and management framework, I believe my role as superintendent is to bring us forward, and our recommendation tries to do that. And in the end, however, your guidance to carry out whatever decision you make is our responsibility. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ron and Laurel, and they're going to present, review the information, and then you'll have time to discuss at the time for the motion. Thank you.
All right, good evening, Chair Ostaffi again, Superintendent McIntyre and Board members. Before you this evening, as Superintendent McIntyre just suggested, is the approval of a second revised budget for fiscal year 2020. As you recall, the board approved the mid-year revised budget back in February before COVID-19 crisis took hold. Our staff has been working diligently to understand the financial impact related to the Governor's order for schools to move to distance learning. With the Governor's announcement last week that distance learning will continue through the end of this school year, we are proposing this second revised budget to reflect some of the financial changes that we anticipate. I want to be clear that while we have made our best efforts to bring forth changes that are known at this time, we also know that things continue to change and become more clear each day. What we are confident in is that this proposed second revised budget will get us closer at year end to our actual financial picture. I am first going to give details on the proposed second revised budget, which is defined as option A in my presentation, as well as some of the supporting documentation in your board packet. This option A represents continuing our operation as-is through the end of the fiscal year. This option is similar to what we described to the board at the work session on April 14th, and it includes overall savings in the general fund with a fund transfer to the Community Education Fund to offset a portion of the revenue loss because of the decrease in fees. Additionally, it includes a decrease in fund balance in the Nutrition Service Fund. So, first, we will take a look at the proposed changes in revenue and expenditures for the general fund budget. To review what was presented at the April 14th work session, when the governor closed schools and then subsequently moved us to a distance learning model, he indicated his plan to continue to maintain school district funding in the general fund. Additionally, we were informed that our federal funding for our general fund would also stay intact. There are, however, a few exceptions where we are anticipating our general fund revenue to come in lower than we estimated in our February mid-year budget. The first is in special education funding. This decrease in revenue relates specifically to a decrease in special education transportation funding that we will discuss in a few minutes. Because special education transportation is fully funded, when there is a decrease in expenditures, there's also a decrease in the revenue. The second decrease in revenue is in our third-party billing. Because we are not operating in a traditional manner, we cannot offer and charge medical assistance for many of the services that we typically do during the school day. Therefore, we anticipate our revenue in this area to decrease. Each year, we receive donations to the school district from boosters to help offset the cost of some of our staff, in particular with our coaches in various athletics and activities. Because those activities did not operate this spring, and those boosters did not have an opportunity to fundraise, we are expecting a decrease in donation. And finally, because spring athletics and activities were canceled, we will not receive anticipated revenues from the activity fees. With that, we're requesting a general fund revenue decrease in this revised budget of $733,285. As we look at the anticipated general fund expenditure changes, we start with our transportation budget. The Governor and Department of Education gave guidance to collaborate with contractors to compensate them if they are willing to pay their employees. As we talked about on April 14th, this is especially important with our bus drivers, since we still find ourselves in a driver shortage. We have worked with our yellow bus and our van contractors to come to agreement to pay them less than their normal daily rate, based on a decrease in fuel, maintenance, and wear and tear of their vehicles during the closure. We also anticipate a decrease in snow removal charges because of the mild winter, as well as our grounds department having the ability to clear any late spring snowstorms, because we don't have students and staff in the buildings at this time. We also anticipate savings in utilities, as well as in salaries and benefits, particularly in overtime budgets, as well as substitute budgets for both our licensed and our non-licensed staff. This option A, which assumes the continuation of our operation, also assumes a fund transfer from the general fund to the unrestricted Community Education Fund in the amount of $1,050,000. The net result in expenditures after that fund transfer is a decrease in expenditures of $733,285. Therefore, as we look at the revised budget in option A's summary, you can see that with the fund transfer from the general fund to the community ed fund, the overall general fund impact is zero. Now, we'll take a look at the impact of the Nutrition Service Fund. As a reminder, the majority of the revenue in the Nutrition Service Fund is from the sales of meals and à la carte items. And so, with the transition to distance learning, we expect a decrease in the sale of meals. While we do get reimbursement from the federal government for the free meals that we distribute each day, it is much lower than our typical daily sales. Therefore, we are proposing a revised Nutrition Service revenue budget in the amount of $2,983,069, less than the mid-year budget that was approved in February. On the expenditure side, because we are selling less meals, we also have less expenditures for food. We also do not need, have a need to utilize some of the substitute staff right now, and we also delayed the purchase of some of our capital equipment in the current fiscal year. Therefore, we are proposing a decrease in the Nutrition Service expenditure budget of $1,892,818. So, here's the summary for the proposed revised Nutrition Service Budget. As you see, the net result is a decrease of our fund balance of $1,090,251 more than was originally planned for, again, at our February mid-year budget adoption. Something to be mindful of is our fund balance of $4.36 million at the end of our last fiscal year was actually above the Department of Education maximum for fund balances in the Nutrition Service Fund. So, with this revised budget, we project a just under $3.5 million fund balance, or 24%. So, this puts us below the MDE maximum, and also still ensures that we are in a solid financial place for this fund. Finally, we'll take a look at the proposed revisions to the Community Education Fund. Like in the Nutrition Service Fund, much of the Community Education Fund revenue relies on fees for their programs and before and after school care. So, with the shift to distance learning, we are anticipating a significant decrease in our revenue, with the majority of the loss coming in the unrestricted Community Ed Fund. Our proposed budget revision is to decrease revenue projections by $3,339,198. There are also several decreases in community ed expenditures. This includes the salary and benefit savings for casual staff, like building supervisors, as well as non-salary savings like supplies and professional services. While we are still working through what summer school may look like, we are estimating a decrease in both revenue and expenditures for summer school. All total, we anticipate an expenditure savings of $1,974,750. So, again, as we look at the summary for the Community Ed Fund, you will see the decreased revenue and expenditure amounts that we just discussed, as well as the general fund transfer that we discussed earlier in the general fund portion of the presentation, of the $1,050,000. At the end of the 2019 fiscal year, the community had unrestricted fund balance with $426,457. With this proposal and this fund transfer from the general fund in the amount of $1,050,000, we are projected, projecting the unrestricted Community Ed fund balance to be zero. So, here is the summary of the net changes for option A, which again is to continue operations as-is through the end of the current fiscal year. Before I move into option B, which, as Corey mentioned, reflects the flexibility that the Department of Education gave to districts to do reductions in their fee-based programs, I will turn it over to Laurel to discuss some of the human resource implications to this option A. Laurel?
Thank you, Ron. I'd like to start by providing just a summary of the two staffing models that we've used thus far to staff our emergency care programs. Beginning the week of March 16th through March 27th, all of our emergency care shifts were staffed by our hourly Kid Stop employees. This includes Kid Stop instructors, lead instructors, and Kid Stop ESPs. Then, beginning March 30th through May 1st, all of our before and after-care shifts were staffed by Kid Stop employees, and then the emergency childcare that took place between 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM was staffed with Fund One employees, as per the Governor's orders. We'd like to shift back with this recommendation, beginning the week of May 4th until the end of the school year, to staff all of our emergency care program with our Kid Stop employees. We will know, we do know that we'll need to supplement some of those shifts with Fund One employees. For example, we'll need nurses. We're deploying some of our continuous substitutes to help support students, and we might need some possible ESPs to cover just some site shifts. But the goal is to maximize the utilization of our current Kid Stop staff in order to cover the emergency care shifts. For nutrition services, we've been employing this model throughout all of our distance learning time, and it involves a rotation of staff to prepare and distribute all of our meals for our free meal program. When school nutrition employees are not reporting directly to a site, they are required to engage in professional development or work on agreed-upon professional goals for their regular assigned hours. And now, I'm going to turn it back over to Ron to discuss the budget implications for our second option, option B.
So, again, just as many districts across the state have done since we received guidance and flexibility from the Department of Ed to consider staff reductions in our fee-based programs, our staff developed another budget revision option that would maintain our programs, particularly our meal distribution and our emergency childcare program, but would also reduce staff in both of our fee-based funds to lessen the impact of the significant loss of revenue in both of those funds. As you will see, while there are some financial benefits to this option, there are also some other implications that need to be considered that Laurel will speak to as well. The framework for option B is to reduce community ed staff and to utilize general fund staff, in particular, general fund ESPs, to operate the emergency childcare program. Also, we would reduce our nutrition service staff, except for essential staff that are needed to continue the free meal program. This would eliminate the rotation that Laurel talked about earlier. A key component to any staff reduction would be the impact to our unemployment expenses. Per accounting requirements, unemployment expenses actually flow through the general fund, regardless of which fund the staff was paid from. Therefore, if we laid off community ed or nutrition service staff, the expenditure in the general fund would actually increase, in this case, by $433,787, which is about 50% of the overall savings, which is what we would pay out in unemployment expenses. It's important to note that we can levy for those unemployment expenses, but there is a year-long lag. So, whatever expenses are this year, next year, we would levy for those. And also, it would impact our taxpayers. In this option, it would lessen the fund transfer amount from the general fund to community ed fund. As you recall, it was $1,050,000 in option A. It would lessen it in the fund transfer to get that community ed unrestricted fund balance back to zero to $482,425, so just a little bit over half. This slide shows a summary of each fund in this scenario. Because of the change in fund transfer requirement, even with the additional unemployment expense, the general fund balance would actually increase by 100, just over $133,000 from our mid-year budget that was passed in October, I mean, February, excuse me. Nutrition Service Fund would only decrease by $682,266 instead of the $1,090,251, which was in option A. The Community Service Fund would stay the same with an overall decrease of $314,448 from the mid-year budget, again, because the fund transfer got us back to zero in the unrestricted community ed fund. So, now that you've had just a brief overview of the financial implications, and again, the board packet had additional financial information for option B, I'll turn it over to Laurel to discuss some of the human resource impact of this particular option.
So, in budget option B, when we consider staffing for emergency care, all of our hourly Kid Stop staff would be furloughed until the end of the school year. As of Monday, May 4th, this would mean an impact of 183 employees currently covering our emergency care sites. In order to cover all of the emergency care staffing needs, we will need to use staff from our sites and our departments that are in Fund One. We'll need to reassign ESPs and teachers from sites and departments to cover the emergency staff care program, and we'll continue to staff the sites with continuous substitutes that are not assigned to classrooms, as well as our nurses. Principals at the emergency care sites may also be needed for additional supervisory responsibilities. In sum, once we do all the bumping and implications that I'll talk about in just a minute, it could impact between 400 and 500 employees at sites and departments. We will absolutely follow our collective bargaining agreements regarding ESPs in considering displacement and reductions in hours, and that will have some impact on insurance that I'll talk about in just a second. For school nutrition services, our staffing model B would only keep our essential staff needed to prepare the meals for our free meals program. Per the collective bargaining agreement for school nutrition, these employees do not have bumping rights, and the cuts are going to be made by position, title, and job performance. As I mentioned previously, several employees in the Kid Stop and School Nutrition Programs would experience a reduction in hours or a complete loss of hours for the remainder of the school year. Due to ESP bumping rates, ESPs currently at the site or in programs may also experience a reduction in or loss of hours. The continuation of insurance is dependent on each collective bargaining agreement. However, because option B has employees furloughed until the end of the school year and not cut, those who were insurance-eligible would continue to receive insurance over the several months as outlined in the various collective bargaining agreements. Another implication for option B is that it may be challenging to retain staff for next year. We have several openings- We have several openings in school nutrition assistance and Kid Stop ESPs every fall and throughout the school year, and this may exacerbate the problem. Finally, we also know that if we lose employees, there is a turnover cost that's related to this. According to SHRM, the Society of Human Resources Management, the cost of turning over employees can range between 30 and 50% of the employee's salaries. Some of those turnover costs include hiring, advertising, interviewing, screening and hiring, onboarding, which includes training and management time, potential loss of productivity. A, a new person can take one to two years to reach the productivity of an existing person, loss of engagement, and possible loss of customer service for our families and students. As I mentioned earlier, an implication for option B is that some ESPs would be displaced and have bumping rights per our collective bargaining agreement into Class One ESPs currently at sites and departments. It very likely will mean a reduction or a loss in hours for both the Kid Stop ESPs as well as the displaced ESPs from sites and departments. Concern that the ESP being reassigned, reassigned to sites or the emergency care programs are working in environments that are very different from their current assignment. This may cause, also cause sites to lose existing relationships with ESPs and families and student support. Additional training will absolutely be needed to support ESPs in order to, um, in addition to additional administrative work, documenting all of the changes in staffing, number of hours, and insurance. Finally, another consideration to option B is related to our priority result work of recruiting and retaining a staff, a diverse workforce. Approximately 20% of our Kid Stop staff are staff of color. In addition, if bumping to occur, occur, it would impact our probationary ESPs at sites and departments. And as you can see, our supervisors are really committed to this priority work, and 33% of our Class One probationary ESPs are staff of color who would be impacted. I'm now going to turn it over to Ron to conclude the presentation.
Thank you, Laurel. Um, as Corey mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, we thought it was important to model what a staff reduction would look like for those fee-based funds that have been impacted by the distance learning format, both the financial implications as well as to understand the human resource implications. While we continue to evaluate and plan for the long-term effects of the COVID crisis, we believe the budget revisions indicated in option A are the best path forward because they can continue our operations efficiently and can be accomplished without impacting our general fund fund balance. Therefore, administration recommends the approval of the fiscal year 2020 revised budget, including the transfer of $1,050,000 from the general fund to the community education fund as indicated in option A of your board packet document and this presentation. So with that, I will turn it back to Chair Ostaffy.
Thank you, Ron. With that, I know people have questions on the presentation, and we can do questions on the presentation and till we get to a motion. So, uh, I, I, Tim, I think that's the right way to go here. So, uh, with that, uh, let's open up for questions if, uh, let's start with, uh, Director Craig. Do you have any questions for Ron or for anybody?
No questions at this time.
Thank you, Director Craig. Director Muscata Jones, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Director Dawson Walton? Any questions on the presentation?
Nope, I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you. Director Douglas?
Uh, I, this isn't really for me. It's really for, uh, the people who might be listening. That was a lot of information, and I was just wondering, um, if Laurel or Ron or Corey would speak to, um, the heart of the matter, which is why we have these presented to us today? Because of the governor's, um, directive in, um, how we can use our funds? In just a really short, like, sentence or two, why are we voting on this? Right now, so that the rest of the people understand why this is, uh, um, on our agenda tonight.
Yeah, uh, thanks for the question, um, Director Douglas. So, uh, typically in a normal rhythm of our budgeting process, as you know, we adopt the budget in June, and then we, uh, do a revised mid-year budget in February. Um, we did that same rhythm for fiscal year 2020. Um, the, uh, COVID crisis came, uh, after that last, uh, budget adoption in February by the school board. And with it, there are significant changes in our revenue. And as you saw tonight, as well as some of the expenditures that we anticipated as well in the various funds. And so, uh, for transparency purposes, uh, we thought it was important to bring this revised budget back to the board so that they have a sense. Again, as I, as I mentioned in the presentation, there are still things changing, and we're learning new things every day. But I do believe that this gets us closer at the end of the year, when those final financial statements are put together, this revised budget gets us closer to actuals at the end of the year to, to be closer to where we're actually going to end up. So that's why this is brought forth, uh, this evening. The second option, as we, Superintendent McIntyre referenced, and, and I did as well in the presentation, that second option was because the governor finally did give, or MDE finally gave some guidance. Um, and again, that was something that we had requested and we were seeking for a number of weeks after the initial closure, that did allow school districts to look at those fee-based programs. And if needed to make reductions, um, our teams put together those scenarios to make sure that we are looking at all of those aspects and then bring it to the board for, uh, consideration. So that's why we wanted to bring both of those to you this evening with our recommended action to continue operations as is.
Mr. Terp, may I clarify? At this time, are we offering, asking only questions or maybe offer commentary? Or would you like to hold that to the discussion on, on some motion?
I would like, I would like to hold commentary to, uh, any motion that may be made. I would like to keep this on questions specifically on what was just presented to us. Any clarifying questions on the finances or the employees affected or, or anything like that? Did you have any questions, Director Simon?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. I've covered everybody so far, correct? With my question, I expand or expound a little bit, uh, on the issue around the previous month where we have taken, uh, Fund One ESPs, all types of different ESPs that are very important in the classroom and in our facilities, and, and we moved them into childcare, basically sat the childcare employees. Could, could you, Laurel, maybe, uh, help us understand we did that, that disruption? As noted?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Ostaffy. We, we decided to move to that staffing model due to the governor's orders because we believed we were to use all of our Fund One employees to staff our childcare programs during our regular school day. And as you mentioned, we were, ended up pulling very, very valuable and important ESPs from their regular assignments to do that. And that's why we're recommending going back to the model that we had before, where we can use our, our Kid Stop ESPs and instructors who staff the Kid Stop program for which they're trained and hired.
And, and why did it take so long for the governor to be clarified? And why was it confusing in the first place?
Laurel, I can take that a little bit. So frankly, yeah, so the, in all reality, the governor's order from the get-go was to utilize one employees for the entire emergency childcare site. But with that order, it also had, um, retaining all of your employees. So we thought to get it up and off the ground running in two days, it would be wise to start it out with staff who typically work in that type of setting. And then what we did is we gradually, as Laurel explained in one of her slides, moved to a hybrid model. You, in the governor's order, you are not required to do before and after school care. It's strongly encouraged. And, uh, right now, uh, around 40% of our people who utilize the emergency childcare site utilize that 6:30 to 9:00 AM and 3:00 PM to 6:00 PM timeframe. So we think, uh, and I'd say the majority of school districts are offering full-day emergency care versus only, uh, school hours care. But that's how I believe it, it came about in our thinking and in the way that we activated it.
Okay.
Can I provide some perspective perhaps? Not every district is as big as ours. And so having Fund One employees in emergency childcare would be the teachers that the students are used to. And that's what's happening in Columbia Heights. Very difficult to make decisions based on every single type of district.
Yeah, it, like, a order fits all was not the way that, uh, we should have, that, that, that order should have been given. Uh, as you write, there are different, across many different districts, uh, and, uh, that's commentary.
Add a little bit, it's hard to interrupt. I can't see body language so far. I apologize if I talked over you. My apologies. I just wanted-
Commentary, so yeah, you got me at the right time.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate your grace. The, the part that's important as well, when this order came on the 15th, we had, that was a Sunday, we had to have childcare ready that Wednesday. And we had to have food ready to go the next day on the 16th. And all we knew at that point was schools were going to be closed till the 30th, when distance learning was going to start. And then the thought of, so we, we just used our Kid Stop employees. That was the best thing we could do quickly, and we had staff who know how to, you know, are experts in that, in those roles. Then as the distance learning plan got rolled out, that was set for April 30th. So we had another window of time of how do we do the work the next few weeks, not knowing if kids were coming back till, you know, on May 5th. Now, as time moved on, that became more and more clear. But at the time, we had to make a plan for childcare for that small chunk of time with the understanding we got to be ready to come back to work fully staffed, ready to go, May 5th. So that was another kind of factor for all school districts was what we knew at the time, what we could plan for at the time. Now, now that it's extended to the rest of the year, you're hearing us say, well, we'd like to go back to using those, uh, staff that do this job because we now know it's through the rest of the year. So it was a little bit of what we knew when we knew it as well. And that's just some context I'll, I'll offer to the board.
Okay.
Can I, uh, just ask one, one more clarifying question?
Chair, go ahead. Director Douglas?
Based on the number of emails that we've received, I feel like there is an impression that this is a, um, a meeting designed to determine, our staffing needs, and I feel like it's actually more of a budgetary meeting. Can we just clarify that for a moment, please?
Yeah, so, uh, again, the action item that's before you this evening, uh, school board, is, uh, action item two of a revised budget. So, um, the option A that's recommended by administration, is the revised budget for revenue and expenditure in our three operating funds. Because staffing is such a large part of our budget, there always is staffing implications in any budget that we bring forward for approval. And so that's the staffing component, and that's why we laid that out in both the option A and the option B, on what are the ramifications in those revised budget options as it relates to staffing.
Okay. Thank you.
I have one more question. I'm sorry. So, uh, Superintendent McIntyre and, um, Ron, while the governor provided the opportunity for school districts to move funds, we are required to actually take action to move those funds. The district, um, cannot move them without our approval. Is, and that again is why we have these options in front of us. If we approve to move those funds, we understand what that looks like. And if we do not approve that, um, we have the accountability to then, uh, vote on option B. Again, our accountability in terms of the ramifications. So while the governor's, uh, uh, and legislative, uh, guidance has allowed this flexibility, it still requires our local district, like every other district, to take an affirmative action to actually move these funds.
Yeah, that's a, a great distinction. And I would say a couple of things that in the governor's executive orders, a few of, a couple of the executive orders, uh, there was some flexibility to do fund transfers to offset some of the financial challenges, in particular, that are fee-based funds like community ed and nutrition service might have for district. What that did is it really opened up some flexibility to do some transfers in restricted funds to some of those funds that needed some assistance. Initially, the first executive order that that came out didn't apply to our district specifically because it was very narrow in its scope. It, it only allowed transfers if it, um, was paying for transportation costs associated with distributing materials and or food, and/or if it was additional costs as it related to the emergency childcare, uh, program. The latest executive order from last week actually expanded it. So there was some additional, um, flexibility to transfer some restricted funds that we're still digging into. What does that look like? The, the proposal, the proposed revised budget that's before you this evening is actually doing a general fund transfer from general fund to community ed, which we always have the flexibility to do in the normal rhythm of our budget process. The only, the only difference is, or the only, uh, requirement is, is that it does take board action. Typically, that can be in an adopted budget. So that could be included when we come to you in June to do a fund transfer if we have projected deficits in another fund. Or it could be as a revised budget, like the mid-year or the one that we're currently in. So the one that we're asking to tonight doesn't necessarily pertain to the governor's executive order that allowed some flexibility for fund transfer.
And at this time, um, a fund transfer to support, uh, the, the fund balances and to continue paying, um, our employees in these fee-based programs at this time, now the legislative act, different, um, activity is changing by the day. At this time, we will not be reimbursed for that, those expenditures. Is that correct to our knowledge at this particular point in time?
At this point, the only assurance is that we have been given, um, from the governor and from the Department of Ed is that their goal is to make us whole in Fund One and our general fund. They have given us no assurances, um, nor any hope, I would say, at this point in conversations, that they, um, will be funneling any additional resources for those fee-based programs like community education and nutrition service. We've had a lot of conversations with Valerie Dawson that, uh, you know, is our legislative partner, and, um, and she has not heard anything in her conversations with individual legislators as well, that there's any traction or movement for additional funding as it relates to our fee-based program.
Thank you.
And, uh, I have one additional question. Ron or Laurel had mentioned there were 183 ESPs that were affected. How many would be affected in our nutrition program? Just so that we have apples here.
I'm pulling it up right now, Mike. There are a total of 143 employees in our school nutrition program. And then depending on the staffing model, I believe about a third would be needed as essential. Is that correct, Ron?
Yeah, it's roughly.
Okay.
Um, I had a question. So given that, um, you know, we would have in a regular circumstances, aside from COVID-19, not needed to have, take action at this point in time. So that would be a more meaning later. And given that, uh, administration's recommendation is option A, there was some interest from the board, certain, um, some, some board members that we would want to look at, some explore some other options. Is that why we're here right now, looking at it? Looking at another option besides what our administration has recommended?
I'll start, and Ron, you can jump in here. I, I can't see him very well, so forgive me. We want, because we had new, new, um, guidance, I guess, of clarification here about two weeks ago, like we referenced, for- here about two weeks ago, like we referenced, for to clarify whether if districts had the need to make reductions, could they? I remember that initial word really felt like we were to make sure we were keeping all, all employees whole. So with that new clarification and option, and with some districts needing to do that without a choice, we put together what that would look like. So you had some kind of context or comparison to, to work from. Uh, so you have the keep everyone employed until the end of the year for the next month and a half or um, because that option's there, what it would look like if we went down that other path. So Ron, you might want to add to what I said here, maybe.
Yeah, the only thing that I would add is that um, that as you saw in the slides this evening, the Community Education Fund with the loss of revenue, a little bit different than our Nutrition Service Fund, it is requiring, in order for them to get back to zero, um, it is requiring a, a general fund transfer. And so um, we have been looking, in particular at Community Ed, to put together a plan for what would a reduction look like if we were given the flexibility and authority by the governor and MDE to do so. So that has been something that we've been looking at already. We did put together um, the Nutrition Service just to make sure that we were looking at all angles and making sure that, that we had a full understanding uh, what would be the impact for our system, for our fund balance, for our staff. It was important for Laurel and her team to look at the human resource impact in both of those funds as well. So we can clearly articulate to our board as well as to our community what the impact is.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Director Craig?
I have a quick question.
Okay.
Um, since this is, this is fee-based programs, it's possible that we're just temporarily solving the problem. It's possible that we end up having to take this action in the future anyway. Is that right? Since we don't know what's going, what's going to happen with COVID.
Sure, if you don't mind, I can respond to that. Thank you for bringing that up, Director Craig. So um, here's the comment that I made earlier in the topic or the presentation that I did want to stress, and I think this is true for all districts. Um, what you said is, is really true. There are many, um, we may need to make reductions down the road, depending on how this continues. If if this situation were to continue, we're going to need to reevaluate that. Our goal right now is just to get through the end of the school year. And should this distance learning model continue in some fashion, which it very well could, or in some hybrid capacity, well, we may need to come back to you with that if the revenue continues to not come in in those fee-based programs. So we're just giving you a solution through the, through the end of the year.
In the school year.
Yep. And also, and Ron did a nice job explaining that, at least at this point, we will be coming back to you with the twenty twenty-one budget and any, any other revisions at the end of June. So that's another opportunity to address this again. And we'll know a lot more by then as well at the rate we're learning new things all the time.
And I guess I would add on the flip side of Director Craig's comment. I mean, there's also, we know that the economy is slowly opening back up against you. Also, we also don't know on the other side, I mean, we could be utilizing our fee-based childcare on, you know, as per usual. So again, you don't know, there's ways to look at this, so.
Uh, Ron, the one thing, we, we talked about the impact of these budget items, but it looks like we could, at the end of our year, at June thirtieth, based upon uh, the state and the county moving back property tax receipts, that we could be short in the fund balance, uh, or not having got that in on our revenue side of up to thirty million dollars. Probably not that much, but it, it is a significant number that won't be coming in May fifteenth because they've extended it to July fifteenth. So since our fiscal year ends June thirtieth, how short are we going to be? Uh, and, and, you know, we've, we've asked that before. That is part of this fiscal picture. That's part of the budget. So how short of revenue are we going to be this year, making it up, yes, a month or two later, hopefully? But can you explain that?
Yeah, so a couple of things. Um, first, we don't know what the impact is going to be with that shift. The um, the county, Hennepin County has essentially said that they're not going to penalize people if they don't pay their property taxes by May fifteenth. They're still encouraging them to do so. But essentially, they're saying we're not going to penalize until July fifteenth. So with that, it doesn't change the revenue that we're bringing in. Essentially, if we don't bring it in um, in the normal timeframe, it'll go as a receivable. So it will stay, the revenue will stay the same for our fiscal year. What it impacts is our cash flow. And so we've worked closely with our financial advisor who helps us put together our, our, um, our cash flow um, outlook and making sure that we have enough liquidity in our investments because obviously we have plenty of fund balance at this point to withstand some cash flow um, delays like we're um, potentially going to have with those um, those county taxes coming in. So we do have a plan in place to withstand, to be able to have those investments freed up, to be able to withstand the cash flow challenges that could come um, as a result of those, those changes with the county. In addition, in, in years past, uh, and we have no um, knowledge of whether this would happen, but in the past, the state has used the delay in payment from one fiscal year to the next um, as a way to balance their budget. So it, depending on, you know, hopefully, we're going to get a financial projection from the state next week. Um, that, that'll be very preliminary, but it will help us give a better indication of where um, tax questions and tax revenues for the state are coming in and how that potentially could impact schools down the road. So we are working closely with our financial advisors from a cash flow perspective. Um, we have the benefit, and I talked about this um, in uh, early April at our work session, that because of our fund balance and because of the conservative nature um, of our district and our school board over the last several years, we do have um, a healthy fund balance that will help us withstand some of those potential cash flow issues that might come our way.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Can I add?
Hold up, a couple people.
I just have a clarification on what you um, just brought up.
Oh, yeah, go, go ahead. I just couldn't hear who's talking.
Isn't it true, is Kelsey, isn't it true that, you know, it's not that like anybody can, I mean, there's some stipulations around taxes and paying the taxes. I mean, they have to have a certain, certain threshold, like their tax goes above a threshold or, you know, things like that. I mean, it's, so it's not like it's a blanket ability to abate penalty, you know, for the extension of taxes. I mean, there's some stipulations around it. So it's not like we're not going to be left with like, um, the assumption that people aren't going to be paying their taxes because there's certain, there's certain thresholds that you have to pay.
Yeah, there are, and I don't have him in front of me.
Ron, I do. I do, because this is important. Uh, the estimate that we had discussed in the past was about thirty percent of the taxes. Uh, and, and we're expecting a fifty million dollar tranche of money coming in. About thirty percent of that is from escrow, which will probably be paid on time. The banks can be very efficient at doing that. It's about fifteen million. There's a group that's over a hundred thousand, does not get a leg. Very good question, Kelsey. So that's over a hundred thousand. So you're going to look at big retails, big industrial and, you know, things like that. And so far, I, I haven't been able to find out how much that is. Call it ten million. So ten and fifteen is twenty-five. So now we have potentially twenty-five million uh, of, of taxes that are due where people could logically look and say, they don't want it until July fifteenth, I won't pay it until the fourteenth. So I think you, you're right, there is some that's going to come in. But as I mentioned, up to maybe thirty, twenty to thirty is probably a reasonable amount that is at risk. Ron, with you, and we've chatted about this in the past. Does that make sense? It may not be that much, but it's about the top, it's about the top.
I, I don't want to necessarily go on record with a specific estimate. I, I do think that that's something that we could put together some models for, um, specific models with our financial advisors. But again, I, I am confident, and I can say with confidence, that because of our healthy fund balance and where we're at with our investments, that we definitely have a strategy um, knowing that um, this delay to July fifteenth, uh, is it going to occur? And there will be people that will, that will um, wait to pay their taxes until July fourteenth or fifteenth because of that. But we do have a strategy as a district that we will not be harmed by that.
And the state payment is what, an average payment per month of around twenty million? Or am I a little high on that?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, Mike.
Uh, let, let me ask you a question, Jessica, and then, uh, and then we'll go to you, just to follow up, Ron. Uh, you, you mentioned that the state could indeed, uh, you know, play the game of moving it into the next fiscal year. Like, it's been done in like the horrend, you know, the horrific areas of seven and oh eight and oh nine. So could you tell me how much would one month payment, if they're paying on a monthly basis, how much roughly would that be if they delayed June into July? Is that twenty million, fifteen million?
They don't, um, they typically what they do, we, we do get paid uh, monthly on a monthly basis. So what the shift typically does is, uh, typically what they do is they pay us ninety percent of what our estimated revenue is going to be for the year, and they annualize that and pay it out month, a couple of times a month. Um, and usually they do ninety percent, and then the next year, they chew it up and pay the other ten percent based on the actuals. Because as you know, so much of our revenue is based on enrollment and also expenditures. Um, what they typically do in a shift is they'll change that. Instead of giving us ninety in one year and then ten percent the next year to equal the hundred percent, they'll shift it and say, we're only going to give you seventy-five or eighty percent or whatever it is. Um, essentially, um, they shift it to the next year so they can balance their current budget. We still get the same revenue. Um, we recognize that revenue in that current fiscal year, but what it does again is it creates a cash flow issue for us. Because essentially, we're cash flowing the state until they give us the money. So it doesn't affect necessarily our budget. It doesn't affect um, what we can expect from the state. What it affects is our ability to cash flow. And if we don't have, if a school district doesn't have the reserves in place, then they have to look at short-term borrow, borrowing. So because the, the state can't run it as a deficit, they essentially uh, shift the borrowing cost onto school districts uh, to do that short-term borrowing. Again, at this point, we'll continue to monitor it. So I can't say forever, things continue to change. At this point, we're in a, a healthy place as those things come towards us uh, to continue to leverage that fund balance and those reserves that we have to withstand some of those cash flow challenges that might come our way.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Director Craig, did you have a question?
That did answer it. Um, but I did want to say, will you pass off that tax report you expect from the state? Or would Valerie Doslin pass that off to us?
Uh, are you saying the um, the financial projection next week that they're expecting?
Yes.
Yep. I'll, I'll make sure to get something out to you when it comes. I'm not sure exactly, I think it's probably Monday or Tuesday that they'll come out with that. Again, it's not the actual um, forecast that'll come in November, I think it is. Um, but what it is, is it's trying their best to try to understand what is going to be the impact and how much of the state reserve um, that they have, um, have they already spent? Which we're anticipating a bulk of that, I can't remember, billion dollars or whatever it was that, uh, that they had projected. So that's what they're trying to do essentially, to give us a better sense of where are we at right now and what can we expect as we go into next November. So once we get some of that info, I'll make sure to share it out with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. And uh, i- if there are some major issues, we do have a work session in two weeks and a board meeting in a month uh, where that could be brought forward if it does have any material impact on, on what we're doing. Um, any final questions on this presentation before we go into uh, making any motions on what we want to do tonight? Okay. Uh, so uh, thank you for doing that at the moment. So we have uh, Option A and Option B before us with administration's recommendation uh, to approve Option A, which is basically to transfer a million fifty thousand uh, in the general fund over to Community Ed, uh, spend down the four hundred and twenty-some thousand that was already in the Community Ed fund and to uh, continue to spend down in the uh, a million or so, yeah, roughly over a million in the uh, the food fund, uh, the nutrition fund and uh, not make any transfers there, but to uh, spend a million out of the four million in, in funds. So those are, that is what A is roughly. Uh, and you can go back into uh, the items. And uh, so that is uh, is there a motion to approve administration's recommendation of the revised fiscal year twenty twenty budget, which is Option A?
This is Jackie Moscata-Jones, and I move to move, to vote for Option A.
Uh, so you're, you're moving to?
To put it to a vote.
Put it to a vote, thank you. Uh, is there a second on moving forward Option A?
Second.
Second by Director Simons?
Simons, yep.
Thank you. Uh, is there, I'm not going to ask, discussion? Uh, so with that, uh, who hasn't uh, gone first? Director Dawson Walton, if you have any questions or comments regarding uh, Option A or the vote on Option A?
Yeah, I have a lot of thoughts about that. I mean, I fully, um, I support administration's thoughtfulness and this recommendation.
Kelsey, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you very well.
Yeah, you faded out.
Oh.
Now, now you're, now you're fine.
I'm fine, okay. Um, yeah, I just wanted to think our administration were really thoughtful about option, the options that we have and presenting the Option A because I think that, you know, the message, I feel, the just, on A has been, um, can you not hear me?
You're going in and out. You're really going in and out.
Should I try to call in? I wonder if I should.
Kelsey, Kelsey, when your hand is up by your head, that's when it's quiet. So just keep your hand down. Not my, my.
Okay, Kelsey?
Okay, can you hear me now? I can, I can, I see everybody like going like this. I just, you know, I really want to, I want to thank our administration for providing a thoughtful option to us with Option A. I really respect your, um, you know, from an HR perspective, for fiscal perspective and, you know, from a leadership perspective. Um, I know it's been a huge balance to, to be able to kind of go in this unknown, um, you know, circumstance and crisis that we're faced with, with a lot of uncertainty and still hold the value of, you know, our students um, at the forefront. And we know that consistency, I mean, you look at all the, the emails that we, what we received, and a lot of it was about consistency in what our students, um, you know, who our students are with in, in day-to-day and the amount of work that goes into um, the role of our kids at EST and frankly, all ESPs. And I just really just, I value their work. I think we're talking about a month and a half. I mean, through now until June, I, I, you know, when I weigh the, the fiscal side of it with the human side of it, the human side, to me, the cost is so great. Um, and, you know, when we've kind of embarked on our, you know, our strategic planning process and come together as a new board, one of the things we said we really value are, are staff and then our engagement and our, and our families. And I, you know, I just um, can't imagine any other option now is Option A. And um, with that, I know there's going to be more discussion. Um, but I just think all of the ESPs and the teachers and the parents uh, that send us emails and, and, you know, unfortunately, I, you know, they, they were justifying their role. And um, for me as a board member, our job is to ensure that we are true to our mission and we're fiscally responsible and we're um, really supportive of the decision-makers and the operation side of our, of our, of our organization. So um, with that, I just want to, I guess I just want to say, I really, I very much support Option A.
Okay, I think your very final words were, you support it because we, you, you bailed out.
I support Option A.
All right, thank you. Uh, let's see, on the. All right, thank you. Let's see, on the top of my screen is your Moscata-Jones. So, Director Moscata-Jones, if you want, have any questions or comments?
I, I spent the better part of the last two days reading through a bunch of emails, and we can, we could pretend to say that this is just about budget, but the problem is, in a school district, particularly in our school district, the great majority of our budget is human capital. And so, I just want to say that if we really truly want to live our mission, if we really truly want to save money in the long run, we would invest in our people. Right now, for the last month and a half of school, they've done a ton of professional development. We now have the best-trained ESPs of probably any district in dealing with behavior, which will cost us less money in the long run. We have committed to having more staff of color, reflecting the diversity of our district, and we're talking about, if we have to cut, we cut by seniority. Our newest hires are a big chunk of staff of color. I think I want to thank the staff for looking at this budget. I want to say that I am so sorry that you had to spend so much time to do this. I want to apologize to all the staff who feel like they had to justify their jobs when I know that what's most important right now, when our kids are going through probably the biggest trauma of their entire life, is that they need our staff to be consistent for them. Right now, we are going to be spending more money as a society if we don't provide stability for our staff and our students. The reason I couldn't think of a word earlier is because when you're in trauma brain, your brain does not work very well. The stress and the feeling that I've had the last few days, thinking that this is even an option that we want to consider, makes me physically ill, because we have the money. I work for Columbia Heights District. They don't have the money. This district has the money to be able to do that with zero impact on our budget this year. I have no idea why we are even discussing this.
All right, thank you. Yes, if you want to, comments or questions, we're not going to rebut people at this point. So, if you, do you have a question or a comment? Director Douglas?
I do not have a question, but I just wanted to make a comment. Well, a couple of comments, so I apologize. I just wanted to say that I, I, my opinion is that the board never intended to cause panic amongst our ESPs, that their jobs were on the line. I don't think that's what our intention was. I, my understanding all along has been that it is the administration's responsibility to present us both pieces of information, so that we're making a decision with all of the information that we have. I do support option A, and I support all the staff that we have. However, I would like to suggest to our administrative team that we look really closely at the valuable ESPs that we have, which is a hundred percent of them, and find out, how can we better support our students with their skill sets? If that means reassigning in the future, because we don't know what next year looks like, then maybe we can reassign people and better utilize their exceptional skill sets that we might not even be fully aware of right now. And also, how can we further their potential to rise up within our district through training, while we are in this kind of awkward, unknown time that is really difficult to navigate? And I think that so far, a lot of our staff have been utilizing the opportunities available to them to take on additional training, and I am just so thankful that they have done that. And I also just wanted to say, if I wasn't clear, that every ESP that we have is super valuable. This process has been really challenging for our administration, our staff, and our families, because the governor's directives were not clear about exactly how we could operate. And I think that if we, if we had a better and clearer understanding of what our options were, we wouldn't be faced with as difficult decisions to make. But I really don't believe that it was ever the intention of the board or the administration to, to make our staff feel undervalued. I strongly believe that that has never been the position of the board, and if I'm wrong, please, you know, say so yourself. But my personal opinion has been that we really value our people and want to build them up. So, thank you for all the work that everyone has done going forward with this information, and presenting all the options, so that we can make an educated decision on what's best for our district and our family.
Thank you, Director Douglas. Director Simons, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you. Like the other directors have mentioned, definitely I have a lot of comments and a lot of feedback. I will try to abbreviate them. Like Director Moscata-Jones said, it's, we've spent several days really thinking about this. So, first of all, again, I'd like to thank Superintendent McIntyre and the staff. And as Superintendent McIntyre indicated, we really have three principles that are really important to us at this time, that we value our people, our staff, our families, and our district stakeholders. And we really want to create and sustain that culture that values people, even in the midst of difficult decisions. I think how we choose to act, we can uphold our principle of valuing all of our people, even in difficult situations and difficult decisions. Responsible stewardship of our resources, financial and otherwise, we definitely need to ensure that we have the right people with the right skills at the right place in service to our students. As a board, our responsibility is to ensure that our decisions protect our financial and operational stability, both short-term and long-term, and that's fundamental in our obligation as board members to all of our stakeholders, our staff, our students, and our community. And transparency, Ron, thank you for hitting on this, and Superintendent McIntyre. Again and again, I hope it's been very evident that the board members and district leadership has stated that transparency in our decisions, to ensure that we maintain trust and credibility, is fundamental to how we operate. And sometimes transparency is difficult. All of our conversations are public. We're not able to work through these things behind closed doors. So, the result of this is that there's uncomfortable conversations, because we're doing this real-time, and we're doing it in the public. So, as Superintendent McIntyre indicates, that's why we have two options before us. And option A is, I believe, truly we require board action that's in the affirmative, to make this decision to move funds that we're not being reimbursed for, to move dollars from a taxpayer-funded K-12 source to cover costs that under normal operations would not be intended to be paid for by the state or by local funding sources, but instead by those fees collected. So, while the governor allowed for that flexibility, our board must still make this decision on behalf of our residents and our stakeholders. And the good news is, as was outlined in all of the detail, this doesn't affect our general fund. We're able to use those savings from the general fund, again, which are meant for K-12, but we're able to use that without an impact to our overall fund balance, to shift that over and make the choice. We're making this choice to continue to pay all of our people that we, again, we value in our nutrition fund and in our fee-based service fund. This is a choice. This is something that we had to act on, either in the affirmative, and that I think we needed to take that accountability in option B, if we were not going to do that. And so, I think it's, again, important to have that transparency, because if we didn't pass that, we needed to have another, we needed to take that accountability for option B, which would have sub, definitely sub-optimized, not, and I don't think valued, having our right people in the right place to serve our students. Unfortunately, I think we need to do better in that communication, because this gap created a wide degree of speculation, and even misinformation. And that's something that we need to look at doing a much better job at in the future, to ensure that our trust is maintained. And this decision was never about, in my mind, to me, about the value, the effort, or the hours our ESPs are putting in to serve our students. It was never about reducing overall ESP hours, or positions, or that staffing model, though in option B, that would be impacted. Which also brings to light that this particular situation has highlighted that we don't have the agility to ensure that we have the right resources in the right place at the right time, as our students' needs are continually changing. It seems ridiculous to me that needing to make a change in a fee-based opt-in program could result in a student losing a valuable, critical special ed, or, I'm sorry, not special ed, that was clarified, another ESP that is serving them day-to-day. So, I just don't, I think this highlights that we don't have necessarily the flexibility that's necessary to serve our students, not only in a time of crisis, but as their needs are constantly changing. So, I think that's the thing we need to work together to continue to ensure that, again, we have the right people at the right place to serve our students with the needs that they have.
Thank you, Director Simons. Director Craig, do you have a comment or question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to address the big picture, and that is, the private sector is constricting. And that means a loss of revenue to the state. It means the state is having to make extremely difficult decisions. It means that it will eventually possibly trickle down to districts. And I don't want to be stuck in a position where we are funding option A, and then end up having to fund option B as well. It's going to be a difficult time as we move forward. There's no question about it. This is a crisis. But as a board, we sometimes have to make the very difficult decisions. It's not something that I've, you know, I've never been through it before. It's not something that I've taken lightly. But we're called to make the difficult decisions. Doesn't mean it's going to be easy. It's hard, and that's because we are in a crisis. So, I am not going to be supporting option A at this time.
Thank you, Director Craig. Over the last several days, we've had hundreds of emails. And unfortunately, for whatever reason, way far, far too many of our teachers and our ESPs felt that we were looking at cutting the relationship with special ed ESPs and EL ESPs and instructional ESPs. That was never discussed. That wasn't discussed two weeks ago. That wasn't as part of the proposal. And I'm very concerned that that type of information was put out there, and that that caused a lot of concern with our staff. That's not what was ever projected, or whatever was wanted to do. You know, that being said, a lot of people were also very concerned with our, with our general fund being some type of emergency fund, or being some type of war chest. And that's certainly not the case either. That has been built up over many boards with the foresight to provide, and quite frankly, it's only three and a half months' worth of operating revenue, where cities do about five to six months. It's there to get us through some, some big things. And also, we are deficit spending, and we are looking to the future without any additional state funds going into significant issues in 2023. So, I just wanted to clarify, a lot of people were saying, you know, this should be a simple, easy decision, because we have all this money. And as Director Simon says, you know, the fiduciary responsibility that we have is one of our utmost responsibilities, and we have to understand the impact of that. You know, and we got to this place, as, as a lot of the teachers were writing in and saying, I didn't realize also why there was a concern about losing all of their other ESPs. And I guess it really wasn't clear that due to the confusion around the governor's order, and what he said and didn't say, and what MDE said, that we were really staffing our Kid Stop and our childcare with not our childcare and Kid Stop employees, but with ESPs that we pulled out of very important positions that should have been utilized for educating our children over the last month, and we actually put them into a childcare position when we had available staff already to do that. And that's just very concerning to me that we got there with that. That doesn't make sense. So, we have to look at better ways of communicating some of these things as we go forward in the future, because that, that's just concerning. And it seems like it has caused far too much confusion and upheaval amongst our staff and concern with our staff and our families, because they've seen what happens when you lose them. And option B would have, yes, moved everyone out of the Kid Stop program, and taken all of those same people, and put them back into roles that they weren't designed for, and taken away from children. So, to me, that was a significant concern with option B. I don't think anyone ever, that was really never discussed, of that type of fellow everybody. We look for other options. We have, you know, we've had discussions with Laurel and Ron about what are the things could be done, and what are the pros and cons? And unfortunately, some of those didn't make it into this presentation this evening. But I think everybody here has thought through very carefully what all of the issues are. What are the financial issues? What are the HR issues? And what are the issues acting in the education, safety, and well-being of our children? And taking a look at the option in front of us as option A, I think there could have been other decisions and choices if we were able to look at this a month ago. As it was, we're about, you know, we've already spent a million dollars down. And when we asked about why we're here, the fiduciary responsibility to make those decisions does sit with us. And if we would have waited until May, another month, we would have been a hole at least two million dollars or more without any input from the board. And so, that's why we're here, to exert our authority and to give direction of what we want to do. And that's absolutely the right thing to do, and the timing with the government change in orders from shutdown on the fourth to the end of the year last week, rushed things a little bit. But again, that planning had been in place, because I think everyone saw it coming. So, the short-term impact of moving that million dollars, we're taking that, the vote is to take it out of, and for teachers and transportation, and move it into the fee-based fund for, for Kid Stop employees. That money did come from a levy, basically, that our taxpayers voted for, for education funding. I understand that. That is a, you know, that is what they initially put that in there for, for our general fund. And we do have the authority to make those changes when we deem it to be necessary. Right now, with the significant changes that are continuing to go on, every day, there's a new order, and we really don't know what it's going to be. I am looking at supporting this, so that over the next four to six weeks, we have some stability. After that, as Corey had stated, there's going to have to be some significant changes and some significant issues, because summer is coming up. We don't know what's happening. The fall is coming up. We don't have, we don't know what's happening. The planning is going to be quite a bit. And what I strongly suggest is, in two weeks or in four weeks at our next meetings, we come back with some plans to this board to see what the thinking is, in order to not be in a position at the last minute having to make changes, but to better understand what the picture is as we go forward. So, any other, well, let's start around the horn, and I think I started with Director Dawson Walton. Do you have any final comments?
Yeah, I actually think there's a little mischaracterization with what happened here. I think it's really hard to be transparent when we put an agenda item out there days before a vote with no public comment. I think that we could have, we should have done this in a different way. There should have been more of a work session opportunity to have this discussion. Absolutely, people feel that their jobs aren't valued, because there's no, there is no general understanding. It is very confusing, and you can't blame our governor. I mean, it goes through all levels of government, that there's been a lot of misinformation. And I just want to just say again, like, you know, our ESPs, our teachers, all our staff- And I just want to just say again, like, you know, our ESPs, our teachers, all our staff, I mean, I want you to know from my perspective, you are extremely, extremely valued. I trust our administration to provide a recommendation to us. I don't, I believe that, you know, I, I didn't see any of the options, sure stuff you're talking about. So I, you know, this came to be, the way this came to be was a little confusing to me as a board member. And so I guess I'm just left kind of with, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful we can move forward with option A. I'm thankful, I think that those emails, what they signify to me was how much our staff band together and support each other. Whether you're a Kid Stop ESP, whether you're a special education ESP, whether you're a principal, whether you're a teacher, whether you're a food service worker, whether you're a custodial staff, that, you know, there's a lot of support. And I just want to leverage that. And I think that, you know, I understand that, you know, our, one of our principals or their own fiscal responsibility and management, but we won't have, if we have, if we've lost the trust of our community and of our staff, we aren't going to have anything to work with when we want to pass a future levy, when we want to utilize our funds in order to ensure our children are safe. And so I just, I guess I will just say that I very much support option A. And I also read through every single email. I tried to respond to as many as I could. And I, I have a newfound even more so respect for our ESPs and all of our workers, all of our staff.
Thank you Director Misscada Jones. Do you have a final comment or follow-up question?
I do have a few more things that I would like to say. So I just want to be clear that the fee-based programs that we're working, that we're talking about are our Kid Stop programs, which many families rely on for their child's childcare. ECFE, which is not fully funded, which is why they ask for fees to fully fund it. And our Four Star Express, which is a booming program in our district that families, you know, try really hard to get into. I'd also like to address the flexibility in staffing. What I saw in the emails was a whole group of people coming together and regardless what their position or their job description said, they came and did all sorts of innovations on how to provide education in a whole different field. We're on a different playing field, people. This is not brick and mortar education. And they knew that and they took the bull by the horns and they reimagined it and they redesigned it. And I have no doubt that every single one of our staff is needed and is, and could be providing extra support. We have the highest gap in EL students. And in distance learning, it is really difficult to figure out technology in another language. I can't even figure out technology in English. So let's, you know, we need people for that. Just to clarify, we did give input on, on the budget, but we did not have a vote or an additional work session based on new information from the state. This voting for vote, for option A would give our staff the time to not only ameliorate a bunch of mental health issues that our kids and staff are going to be through, to be able to adjust to our new normal. It would also give them time to come up with new innovations. There, we could very well be making more money in our fee-based programs than we did before because of innovations and online programming. I know we've had more people even being present for parent education groups and things like that. So I just, I get frustrated that that asking to get the rest of this year is somehow fiscally irresponsible when I'm talking about making an, by continuing our investment for that possible outcome of saving more money and not only more money for our district, but for our society as a whole. Because if we're causing more trauma for our students, then we will be paying for that through the state somehow.
Thank you Director Misscada Jones. Director Douglas?
Yes, thank you. I have a number of comments. I will try to keep them short. So a couple of things is that I have heard really valuable pieces of input from each of my fellow board members. And I just want to say thank you to each of you for sharing your perspective. I also, on that note, Jackie, you brought up a point about not having an additional work session on new information. And I would like to share with the board and the public that in the future, as things change and new orders are handed down, I would support having additional work sessions as information changes. Because I think that we're going to be experiencing a lot of different executive orders and recommendations and changes coming down from the state and federal government. And I want to make sure that we are able to communicate about those in advance of making big decisions like this. Additionally, I wanted to also just say again that I, my feeling is that with five out of six of us have already declared our support of option A, even though we have not taken an official vote, I just want it to be clear to our ESPs and our community that option B is being, has been presented in the interest of transparency, not because we want to eliminate staff members. All of our ESPs, all of our staff members, we know that they are valuable. To my understanding of the reason of this vote is because we're talking about paying for staff members who are part of fee-based programs. What we would like to do is put them back into the fee-based programs where they were hired to continue the essential work that they're doing and take our Fund One employees and put them back into their roles where they are essential to continue to have continuity for our students and families. It's really important that we continue to have continuity for our students and families. Also, as other members have mentioned, we've received hundreds of emails. And I cannot stress enough how important each one of you are and that we have been reading through them and, and really value your opinion and appreciate that even though we were not able to hold a traditional board meeting and able to see you face to face, that your voices are being heard. We are listening to what you're saying and we value each and every one of you. And that's not just our board members. I believe the entire administrative cabinet also feels very strongly about how important each one of you are in our district, which is why recommend, the recommendation was for option A, because you are invaluable. To Jessica's point about our fiduciary responsibilities and taxpayer money, I would, I would say that my perspective on this is that when we are taking this money and transferring it to a fee-based program, we are actually using the money in a way that our taxpayers intended because by putting the money into this fund for the fee-based programs, we are able to continue to serve our students who have Fund One ESPs. If we did not do this, we would be taking those ESPs away from those students and putting them into a childcare setting where they, that is not where they were hired to be. And they are not serving their students in the way that they were intended to do if we don't have them in their Fund One programs. I feel like I could probably talk about this for a long time, so I'll just cut it short. I really support option A and I appreciate all of the work that has gone on behind the scenes. Oh, actually, I did want to say one more thing. Kelsey, to your comment about the different options that were available, my understanding is that that was questions that we asked in our individual meetings with Ron and Laurel and Corey. And that those things were considered, but because they were possibly not viable options, they were not shared here at the public meeting. If I'm wrong on that, please somebody correct me. Otherwise, again, I support option A 100%. And I know that we're going to have some hard decisions to make in the future, but I'm hoping that Governor Walz will give us some clear direction sooner rather than later so we can make the best decisions for our students, families, and teachers as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you Director Douglas. Director Craig, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'll just reiterate that we are not the only district having to make these tough calls. I again, don't want to be in a position where we are funding option A and end up having to fund option B as well, which is completely within the realm of possibility. I, I don't want to be a negative Nancy here or the bearer of bad news in any way. It's just the reality of the situation. And so again, I'll, I'll just reiterate the fact that this is tough. This isn't easy for everybody, both within the private sector and the public sector. So it's not a decision I've taken lightly, but I still, I'm, I'm still not in support of option A.
Thank you Director Craig. When I initially, A and B is presented, B really shocked me because I don't think that that was, you know, really discussed and it, it was quite surprising. And I asked a lot of questions two weeks ago regarding how staff were utilized. And over the last two weeks and tonight and through the emails, it was made very clear that I don't think the staff was being utilized in the proper method, in the best interests of our students and our district. And we've all discussed the reasons for it. We've commented who's responsible and who's not. But I, I, going and back and looking at that, that confusion of ripping ESPs from the classroom and putting them into one area, into childcare and taking childcare and not utilizing them, I, I think just caused a lot of issues that we didn't need to do. And for whatever reason, that was self-inflicted wounds. And I, I hope we can get back with looking at option A and going forward with option A, that we get that stability back. It's only going to last six because there are, you know, who knows what's coming, but at least we have that piece. Director Douglas had mentioned earlier about some things that we can do. I mean, if we have our approximately 90 nutrition service staff, that, that right now, we could work without them as was defined by Laurel. But now we're going to go in shifts. That's probably safer for everybody and that's something to take into consideration. And we also look for them to do training. I asked for a training plan last week and it was promised me as, as recently as a few days ago that we would have the training plan and everything else tonight. And we haven't had that. So I'm very concerned that. I think we do need to know our leadership is ensuring that everyone is doing the right amount of training. I, I have no data otherwise, but over the last two days with so many people writing in, there was a lot of anecdotal, and I'm very happy to hear the amount of training that's going on. But I really need our leadership to better indicate what is appropriate and what type of things are happening. But we've also heard about all those and all the things the staff was doing. And again, that really wasn't clear of what was being utilized with the staff on the time that they weren't in the classroom or weren't in Kid Stop. So I, I'm very gratified to hear that. And I hope that those type of innovations is being coordinated across the district, well, at least across grades, across, across the district. And I, I would like to see, do we have the ability with our food service employees who may have language skills, with some of the Kid Stop employees on some of the changes and shifts who may have language skills, how do we help reach out to our EL families? As was indicated earlier, we do have some of the biggest gaps there. They may not be, you know, translators and they may not official tutors or tutors, but they have the ability to connect with the parents who may have language issues to help the parents then guide their children a little bit better. So I think we need to be very flexible and make, and seek out and make that offer to those staff who may, you know, have downtime, then instead of just training, 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 that we go forward with, you know, other ways of utilizing them to help our students. So.
This sounds like a little micromanagement.
Thank you. Finish your comments.
This is enough.
The, the issue around, if we have, if we have staff that can help, let's, in this time of complete and, and, and changes, let's everyone help. You know, we're not saying, we're not laying anybody off. We're saying let everybody help as best they can and be flexible. So with that, Heather, do you have a comment?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to jump in real quick. Mike, you touched on some things that I think are important. One thing that I think I started to say but got sidetracked on because of all the intensity of everything that we're talking about is we have had, just like other members have said and you've said, we've had some really innovative teams come together. ESPs, principals, teachers, everybody coming together to support our students. And I think that is absolutely fantastic. These people have come together with very little to no notice to support our kids. And what I would like to see happen is, and I know that it might be daunting and it might be hard for us to do this, but I would like to have a way for us to connect with every single ESP individually and find out what their other skill sets are and their aspirations so that we can better serve our students and put them into roles where they can better support our kids and help them move up within our district. As part of our Grow Your Own program, I know a lot of these staff members, like, like you had mentioned and Jackie had mentioned, are underserved students, the ELL students and kids with special needs. But particularly kids with language barriers. A lot of our ESP staff are people of color and they may be native speakers of languages that, that could be moved into a bilingual position where they're better able to serve those specific kids and put them into a public program versus paid program like Kid Stop so that we can continue to keep moving these staff members up within the district and expanding on their roles and helping them find the training that they need to move up. And that's all I had to say.
Can we let Tanya talk? I haven't had a chance to.
Yeah, I wanted to hear from Tanya and then I just wanted to say one more thing.
Oh, did I skip Tanya? I did skip Tanya.
You totally skipped Tanya.
Sorry about that. That's my fault. Thank you.
And I realized in my previous comments, I, I didn't provide an explicit support. So, so for this particular decision, I support, definitely support A, which was, I think, I think everybody gathered. But I think really even the economics of this particular decision, I, I think B just doesn't make sense economically. So I think A, when we, when we think about the economics of this situation, maintaining efficient and effective district operations, ensuring we have the right people with the right skills in the right place, that's, that's really important to me. I've said that a few times. I think option A is necessary. So this is really an unexpected and unprecedented disruption at this end of the school year. And I, we, I don't want to cause more disruption. And so I think this is best managed through with this funds transfer at this time. I think everyone's kind of alluded to the fact that if this persists into the fall, this might result in a different set of decisions as I don't think personally, from, from my point of view, I don't think continuation of general fund transfers will be a sustainable or viable option if this persists beyond our June 30th timeframe on this particular vote. So I think as everyone said, we need to continue to monitor and prepare our options for the reality the fall may look like. And Superintendent McAtire said it may look like a mix. We're seeing some other countries do that, a mix of distance, online, in classroom. And, and as Jackie alluded to, we're, we're going to need that innovation from our people to really flex into different capacities. So I hope that that's something that we can be very, I know Superintendent McAtire and Laurel and Ron do an amazing job leading our staff and communicating with our groups and looking for opportunities to fill all the gaps and to pivot quickly. So again, thank you to. So, um, again, thank you to those, um, to, to Ron and to Laurel for, uh, for all of your work, and Cory for Superintendent McIntyre for your transparency in this. And I do think this was necessary to have this difficult public discussion, so that we are very clear on what, what we're choosing to do and what the ramifications are if we don't make that choice.
All right. Thank you. Sherry, can you please do a roll call on the vote?
Wait, I think Jackie, did you have one more thing to say? Jackie, did you say you wanted one more comment?
Just one quick comment. I just want to, I, I don't think I was clear, although I might have been more clear than I thought, because Tanya um, um, said it for me in a certain way. But I want to be very clear that I know the intention of many people on this board is for us to do the best possible for all students. And so some may get a little overzealous on um, suggesting things to do, but as a teacher in the education field right now during distance learning, I can assure you that every single teacher and every single ESP and every single administrator right now knows who speaks what language, knows who knows what technology, knows who has the greatest thing for this, and they're all relying on each other like you wouldn't believe it, and have created some amazing things. So I'm suggesting that I'm going to step out of their way and I'm going to steal their ideas.
And, and that's, and that's very good. And I think that absolutely that we need to share that, uh, all the unique and, and new things that we're doing with our families as we continue to go forward. And uh, with that, uh, we'll keep going all night. So I would like to, Sherry, please call the vote uh, for approving option A.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Muscata Jones?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Nay.
Director Ostafi?
Aye. The motion passes five to one. Uh, thank you all very much. As uh, Jackie was alluding to, we all come at it from uh, different angles, different options, uh, lots of good questions. Uh, and thank you very much. Uh, our next action item is recommendation for approval of the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment with School District 279 School Board and our salaried professionals, uh, July 1, 2019, June 30th, 2021. Executive Director of Human Resources Laurel Anderson will provide information. Uh, Anderson.
Good evening, Chair Ostafi, School Board members, and Superintendent McIntyre. On the agenda this evening for School Board action is a recommendation for approval of the salaried professionals contract. School Board members have had the opportunity to review the proposed changes to the provisions contained in the terms and conditions, to ask questions, and to consider financial implications. The final step now is for School Board members to give consideration for formal approval. The salaried professional group consists of 21 employees comprised of network administrators, communication specialists, non-licensed activities coordinator, coordinator of data and assessment, data and assessment specialist, data integration developer, and district chef. In addition, the settlement of this contract brings equity specialists, student assistance counselors, and the cultural community liaison, who are previously part of the equity contract. This contract expired on June 30th, 2019, and the new contract will be in effect beginning July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. The agreement contains some language changes to reflect current district practices. In addition, changes have been made to the compensation and conditions, group insurance, and leaves of absence section of the terms and conditions of employment. In the compensation and conditions section of the collective bargaining agreement, language was changed to specify that the salary range listed will be used for the placement of new employees in the group, and the language referencing the cap to the salary range was removed. In addition, employees will receive a 2% increase to their base salary in years one and two. Finally, the district annual match to the employee's 403B was adjusted to a minimum for all group members of $440 and a maximum contribution of $1,500 to align the matching amount for all members of the bargaining group. In the group health insurance section of the collective bargaining agreement, district contributions to health insurance premiums were increased in all three plans. A higher percentage was allocated to the high deductible HSA plan to ensure a no-cost option for employees. Based on employee plan choice, the cost of the increase in district contributions towards premiums is approximately 3%. In the leave of absence section of the collective bargaining agreement, language is added to the personal leave section specifying the current process of a five-day maximum accrual for personal leave. Language added to the short-term leave section requiring the use of all personal leave before short-term leave will be granted. And in the long-term leave section, language is added providing rights to return from the leave at times other than the start of the school year at the district's discretion. The salary investment outlined above is consistent with the financial parameters established by the School Board for the 2019-2021 contract negotiation. The two-year agreement results in a 6.49% total package increase. The total financial investment is $3,958,886 over the term of the agreement. It is the superintendents and my recommendation that you approve the terms of condition, terms and conditions of employment for the salaried professionals.
All right. Thank you, uh, Ms. Anderson. Uh, do we have a motion to accept uh, the uh, agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between Independent School District 279 School Board and salaried professionals, uh, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2021? Is there a motion? There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion?
I just want to say I'm really excited that the equity team is on this contract now.
Okay. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chair?
Director Craig?
I would just like to, I would just like to say that for the next cycle, um, things may change, um, as far as um, some of the parameters involves, but um, for this cycle, since we're closing out for 2019 through 2021, I'll be supporting this.
Okay. Thank you. And uh, I, I think your, the point you're alluding to is things may be changing here in the next year or two with the state. So, uh, but uh, any other, uh, any other questions or any other comments? All right. Uh, Sherry, will you please take a roll call vote?
Director Ostafi?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Craig? Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Muscata Jones?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you. Uh, the next action item is recommendation for approval for the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between the Independent School District 279 School Board and directors and confidential managers, effective July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. Laurel?
Good evening again, Chair Ostafi, School Board members, and Superintendent McIntyre. On the agenda this evening for School Board action is a recommendation for approval of the directors and confidential managers contract. School Board members have had the opportunity to review the proposed changes to the provisions contained in the terms and conditions, to ask questions and to consider financial implications. The final step now is for School Board members to give consideration for formal approval. Directors and confidential managers are a group of 17 employees comprised of directors, assistant directors, and confidential managers. The strategic and operational leadership supports our system and movement towards our mission. Contract expired on June 30th, 2019, and the new contract will be in effect beginning July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2021. The agreement contains some language changes to reflect current district practices. In addition, changes have been made to the compensation and conditions, group insurance, and leaves of absence section of the terms and conditions of employment. In the compensation and conditions section of the collective bargaining agreement, language was changed to specify that the salary range listed would be used for the placement of new employees in the group, and the language referencing the cap to salary range was removed. In addition, stipend payoffs were eliminated. Employees will receive a 2% increase to base salary in year one and two. In the group insurance section of the collective bargaining agreement, district contributions to health insurance premiums were increased in all three plans. A higher percentage again was allocated to the high deductible HSA plan to ensure a no-cost option for employees. Based on employee choice, the cost of the increases in district contributions to premiums is approximately 3.17%. In the leave section of the collective bargaining agreement, language was added regarding the reinstatement of employee from long-term leave of absence to specify the conditions for reemployment in the position occupied prior to the leave. Employees taking leaves for reasons other than medical or political will be re-employed subject to vacancy. The salary investment outlined above is consistent with the financial parameters established by the School Board for the 2019-2021 contract negotiations. The two-year agreement results in a 6.08% total package increase. The total financial investment is $261,140 over the term of the agreement. It is the superintendents and my recommendation that you approve the terms and conditions of employment for the directors and confidential managers.
Thank you, Laurel. Is there a motion to approve the agreement on the terms and conditions of employment between Independent School District 279 School Board and directors and confidential managers, July 1, 2019 through June 30th, 2021? Is there a motion?
So moved.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Uh, is there any discussion? Uh, a roll call vote will be taken by the Board Secretary. Sherry?
Director Dawson Walton? Director Muscata Jones?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Ostafi?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes six to nothing. Uh, next uh, I, uh, action item is the recommendation for approval of the Preferred One Health Insurance, Delta Dental Insurance, and NIS Long-Term Disability and Life Insurance premiums, effective July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. Ms. Anderson?
Thank you, Chair Ostafi. On the agenda this evening for School Board action is a recommendation for approval for rate decreases for the Long-Term Disability, LTD, and life insurance premiums, and the recommendation for rate increases for the Preferred One Health Insurance and Delta Dental Insurance premiums, effective July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021. This spring, the district received a quote from National Insurance Services, working with Madison National Life Insurance Company, that reflects a significant decrease in premiums paid by the district for both long-term disability and life insurance. Our current carrier, the standard, was unable to match the quoted premiums by NIS. Currently, the district pays 100% of the premiums for the LTD policy for eligible employees. The district savings for LTD and life insurance from the current 2019-2020 rates is $267,480, which is a 19% overall rate decrease. Based on our reserve funds and plan use in the Preferred One Health Insurance Plan, we're recommending an overall 5% increase to our premiums. Specific premium increases were based on the plan, either high, value, or HSA plan. Recommended premium rates are listed at the end of the recommendation on the memo that you received. We anticipate that this increase will continue to build the necessary fund reserves to support the self-funded plan and result in a small manageable increase for employees and employer contributions. Our Delta Dental Insurance is a self-insured plan for all contract groups. The Delta Dental Insurance Plan has not had a premium increase for more than 10 years. With our consultant, we've been monitoring our reserve fund. Due to increasing trend costs and increased employee enrollment, we're recommending an overall 5% increase to the premiums. This increase does not affect the district budget unless contract groups negotiate new district contributions. It is the superintendents and my recommendation that you approve the LTD and life insurance, the Preferred One Health Insurance, and the Delta Dental renewal rates presented to you this evening.
Thank you, Laurel. Uh, is Board, is there a motion to approve the Preferred One Health Insurance, Delta Dental Insurance, and NIS Long-Term Disability and Life Insurance premiums, effective July 1, 2020 through June 30th, 2021? Is there a motion?
Director Muscata Jones, so moved.
Uh, we have a motion, and is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Uh, and is there any discussion? Uh, Sherry, can you please call the roll call vote?
Director Muscata Jones?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Ostafi?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion passes six to nothing. Uh, the final action item this evening is the approval of gifts to the district totaling $70,307, sorry, $70,387.59. Is there a motion to graciously approve gifts to the district in the amount of $70,000, $70,387.59? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second by Jackie Muscata Jones.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? I- in these trying times, when thousands and thousands of residents of our district are being impacted, thank you to the generosity of those who have stepped up. Uh, and uh, I'm sure we're going to continue to need that support for our district and our students. So thank you. Uh, a roll call vote, please, Sherry?
Director Muscata Jones? Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Ostafi?
Aye. Motion passes six to nothing, and thank you all for your generosity. Uh, our final agenda item tonight is adjournment. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn at 8:54 PM?
So moved.
I moved to adjourn.
And do we have a second? And there's a second. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor of adjourning, please say aye. Oh, I'm sorry, uh, Sherry?
Director Ostafi?
Aye.
Director Craig?
Aye.
Director Douglas?
Aye.
Director Dawson Walton?
Aye.
Director Simons?
Aye.
Director Muscata Jones?
And we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for all your hard work tonight, and uh, we will uh, see you at a work session in approximately two weeks, if not sooner, if things change. Thank you very much. Have a good night. Thank you, everybody.